Welcome to today's Board of Commissioners work session this April 22, 2025. Today, we have two presentations before us. The first one is to receive an update with respect to our special local option sales tax programs. Our second presentation will be to receive the results of Cobb County Government Services Brand Equity Survey. To kick us off today is Bill Volkman, and he will be providing our update regarding SPOLOST, and I'll turn things over to you.
Thank you, Chairwoman, and good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. We have put together an extensive PowerPoint presentation for you of 70-plus slides. We're going to hit some highlights of these, but it is great information. So, we do want to encourage you to, if you have additional questions about specific projects, staff will be able to answer those. But we want, everybody was very proud of what they were doing, so we want to make sure you had all the great information in front of you, but we will not go in detail through each of these slides. Dr. Moore said we have five minutes per person, or less. She's timing us, so we're going. All right, here we go. 2016 revenue above, our revenue and budget to actuals. So, one of the things that we do want to point out to the board is obviously the SPOLOST collections are done for 2016. With the two areas that we're really focusing on is closing out will be some additional grant revenues to come in, and then the cash that we have on hand continues to earn interest. So, you'll see that that is above budget to date. So, we have 13.6 million of interest earned versus 9.7 of interest budgeted. And just to kind of give you an idea of how that works is we have roughly 74 million of cash on hand as we begin to finalize these projects. And the other big component of that is how we maximize the sales tax dollars through grant revenues. You'll see that we have an actual of 134 million. DOT was the lion's share of that, of 124 million. And then library, public safety, public health generated the remaining 9.8 million. All right, 2016 summary of expenditures. So, this is the dollars that we have left to spend. These are the amounts that are remaining that have not currently been encumbered or expensed out the door. It's 48 million. You can see the departmental breakdown of these projects and the remaining funds. But to kind of put this in perspective, I know we have 48 million remaining to date. Through the end of March, we have spent 1.1 billion dollars on 2016 SPOLOST projects. Any questions on 2016 before I move into 2022? Very good. Okay, so kind of a rinse and repeat of the previous slide, just an update for 2022. SPOLOST collections are ongoing, and you'll see the rolling 12-month and 24-month averages below that. I will say that usually we would like to see the 12-month average above, but there was a one-time catch-up that is driving the 2024 month average, rolling average by a little bit. But through the life of the SPOLOST, we are averaging 17.7 million dollars per month, so that is remaining very consistent as we go through this program. And with that being said, we again focus on maximizing the sales tax dollars through grant revenues, interest earnings, and other revenues. And one of the items that you'll notice through this one is the difference in interest earned. So, this is a newer SPOLOST, but because the interest rates have been very strong through the SPOLOST, we've already earned 24 million dollars of interest. All of those dollars will be dedicated to SPOLOST projects. So, they go back into the program itself and helps maximize our dollars. Any questions on the 2022 SPOLOST revenues? Very good.
Commissioner Burrow has a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Actually, it's, I think for the 2016, if we can go back a slide.
Sure.
Where you have the budget remaining.
Yes, ma'am.
And that's itemized by department?
Yes, ma'am. We have that broken down in a summary for you by department. If you would like the complete project list, we do that each month, and I'm happy to provide that to you.
Okay, but my question is, we've already done revenue above projections for 16?
That's correct.
So, are these projects remaining that aren't completed?
That is correct.
Or still under construction or last-minute things?
Yes, ma'am. All of the 2016 dollars have been allocated to existing projects. These are just remaining to be spent on existing approved projects. That is a great question.
Thank you.
Your work. Okay, so moving on to the 2022 expenditure summary. Obviously, this is a newer SPOLOST. We have 311 remaining, again, all approved projects. These are dollars that are allocated to voter-approved projects. We just have not completed these projects yet. Some of these are not underway, but we'll get to that in a few minutes. But as I said, in the 2016, we spent 1.1 billion. We are over a half a billion dollars spent in 2022, so we are making tremendous progress. And again, this is the breakdown by department, but we do have the project detail every month. If the Board would like to see that, we're happy to share it. It is a little, I'll say, a finance report, so it is very Excel-heavy and small print, but we have it available, and you can send it to electronically to blow up. It definitely wasn't worth, able to put on a slide for you today. Just a different way to look at this. So, we want to show you this for the 2022, this is the project breakdown. Currently, we have 299 projects with activity. Those are underway or completed, and 100 projects that have not begun. Now, those are fluid because we do have bucket projects. For example, some of the DOTs are in large buckets, and then we bring like three projects out of that bucket for, you know, maybe road resurfacing or intersection improvements or drainage. So, those projects will continue to grow as we give you these updates quarterly. But again, 299 projects with activity, and we have spent or encumbered 64% of the approved budget to date. Any questions on this slide? Good. Did I stay under my five minutes? Just barely. Okay. I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Brantley for Parks.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. Five minutes, I'm going to try to go through these pretty quick, but we have a few slides. Make sure I get this right. Okay. Our first one's Fuller's Park, Field One Synthetic Infield Conversion. We are soon to be doing that. That is a 2011 SPOLOST project. Just wanted to mention that, that we did have a couple of SPOLOST projects left from 2011. We're trying to close those out. So, we're trying to close out a couple of 2011 SPOLOST projects as well as 2016 SPOLOST projects. So, this is Fuller's Park Synthetic Field One, and we will be starting that project hopefully in the late summer. Again, it's, we have shut down fields, so we have to do these things a little bit ahead of time simply because it does affect some of our baseball associations. Next is our Powers Jackson Cabin, which will be placed at Hyde Farm Park. Same thing, it is a 2011 SPOLOST project. We're hoping to start that project probably early summer is our plan for that one, and it will be placed next to our, what we call in our visitor center, which hopefully will be at some point our nature center at Hyde Farm. So, we'll be placing it down close between the building and the pond at Hyde Farm. So, we'll be placing that. So, again, another 2011 SPOLOST project. On to the 2016 SPOLOST projects, we have a few left. Again, Hyde Farm Pavilion, this will be a pavilion that will be between the, what we're calling the Walker House and the Operational Barn. So, this is a smaller pavilion that will be there for folks to use. We've got several things that we'll be able to do with it from a parks programming standpoint as well. Same thing, it is actually in construction right now, so we're hoping to finish that project within the next month or two. A Parks Maintenance Building, this was completed about three weeks ago. This is out behind the Parks Office on 1792 County Services, out what we call the old sod farm. So, this building was finished over the winter and into the spring. So, we're excited about this. This is very helpful for us. We'll be actually moving our land unit and part of our construction unit inside of this building and tearing down an old building that they've been in for about 50 or 60 years. Couple of more projects for 2016. Miller Arena Deck Treatment, this will be the treatment of the ceiling under the Miller Arena, Jim Miller Park. If you remember, a few years ago, everything used to fall, you know, it'd almost be like popcorn in your popcorn. So, we took all of that down, and we're going to replace that, and it will hopefully give us as well as some sound attenuation as well underneath that arena. And that project is hopefully going to be done after the fair this year is our plan to do that. Same thing, Price Bridge. Price Bridge was one of our RAP projects from 2016, about $700,000. We've got, we've had some design issues and some engineering issues at Price Park, and Commissioner Gamble's been well aware of that, and we've talked about that several times, but we're hoping to make some good progress with that real soon. So, that is our 2016. Talking about our next project is our sort of 2016, 2022, and this is where we sort of morph them in. But we had money in 2016 for a recreation center, and then we put a little bit more money in 2022 for a recreation center. And so, this is the new Milford Recreation Center. The designer was LDD Blue Line, contractor was Carol Daniel. Our budget for this was about 17.3 that included the land purchase. And as you can see, we're calling the status "complete." It's complete. Commissioner Sheffield, actually, we walked through it one day last week. It's complete, but as you can imagine, there's still punch list items going on, and we are still daily waiting for things to come in, furniture and fitness equipment. Actually, our fitness equipment was delivered yesterday afternoon and installed, so it's got fitness equipment now. But we are anxiously awaiting this. You will be receiving something probably, I would say, in the next day or so. We're still working on finalizing the flyers and everything, but we are looking. We've talked with Commissioner Sheffield, and we're going to do a grand opening on May 17th for the Milford Recreation Center, which is a Saturday. We're going to make a big day out of it. It's going to be carnival games, it's going to be demos inside, we're going to have food trucks. It's just going to be a real big kickoff for that, one of our newest recreation centers in, oh, gosh, 18, 19 years since we've built a recreation center. So, we're extremely excited about this. The inside looks great, I think the flow of it is great. I think the arts is going to be very nice. I think it's just going to be a real nice facility, and we're extremely proud of it.
Quick question, Brantley, on the landscaping. Where are we with that at the entrance?
We're working on that plan like we talked about. We're working on that plan.
All right, thanks.
Okay, moving into 2022 fully, our aquatic centers, we replaced all of our dehumidification units. We did Marsite and paint in all of the facilities. Our last facility is West Cobb Aquatic Center, and it will be open at the end of this month, May 1. So, it is our last of the four that we had done. That was about, you know, about a four-and-a-half million dollar project altogether. There was a lot of interior work that was done, a lot of systems work that was done. It's, anybody that's, if you've been inside one of the aquatic centers, it's a complete change. Everything looks fresh and new and nice, and we're extremely excited about that. We did get our bulkhead at Mountain View Aquatic Center. It came in about a month ago, and that was, that was one of the nights that I did not sleep well, as you can imagine. Putting something that big into a facility is not easy, but they got it in, and we're very extremely proud about that. So, that was our aquatic center. Big Shanty Park, the parking and pickleball courts are complete. They were completed several months ago, and we did a sanitary sewer system. We were on septic out at Big Shanty Park for all of our facilities out there, including the baseball fields, and we had some problems, let's just say we had some problems. So, we had to run sanitary sewer from Kennesaw Mountain High School. That was the closest one, and it pretty much disrupted the entire park for about six months. So, we're extremely happy to have that back up and running at Big Shanty. Our gym floor replacements, we replaced our wood floors in three of our facilities, excuse me, two of our facilities, and the synthetic in one of our facilities so far. We've done all of the facilities except for Ward Recreation Center. Ward Recreation Center will be getting, it had some interior-exterior renovations that will be done in the 2022 SPOLOST that was separate, and we'll be doing that floor underneath it all in one time. But all of the floors have been redone. Some of the floors were original to the building. Some of the floors that we were unaware of had already had a floor put on top of them. So, when we went to take one floor up, we were taking two floors up. So, that was a little bit of a nightmare, but they're all done, complete, and everybody seems very happy with those. We have Lost Mountain Park and Wallace Park for our synthetic turf conversions. We're converting two fields at Lost Mountain Park, our two rectangular fields, 10 and 11. And then we're converting one of the Wallace Park Football Fields, Field Three. And then with the extra money that we have with that SPOLOST project, we did not want to do it all at one time, but we're now going to be taking the remainder SPOLOST from Wallace, and we're going to be doing the two baseball fields, hopefully starting in the fall with that, once that season is over. So, by the end of this year, we're hoping that that's all done. Lost Mountain and Wallace, the Field Three and Field 10 and 11 will be done sometime around July. They'll be ready for our fall seasons for those. Just some of our completed projects, I don't want to go too far, but you can read some of those projects, and we've installed security cameras at 14 parks. We've upgraded parking lot lighting and security, parking lot lighting and security lighting at several parks. We've replaced roof at Arch Station. We renovated the lobby at our gymnastics center. We resurfaced the swimming pool at both Seven Springs and at Sewell. Our both, our outdoor facilities have been redone. We've removed all of our metal halide at Hubert and at Sandy Plains Park, so that's been Installed SmartLink controllers on several of our facilities. As you can imagine, people can just flip a switch, and if they can flip a switch, they flip a switch, and then the lights stay on all night. With our SmartLink controllers, if somebody were to call us and say, hey, the lights are on at 11 o'clock at night, we can actually go on our phones and turn those lights off from our phones. We don't have to go out there at night. So, that's been a big help for a lot of our staff. Let's see, we replaced the humidification systems, we replaced the sidewalk at Terrell Mill, we've added parking at Hurt Road, we repaved Florence Road Silver Comet Trailhead, we dredged Wild Horse Creek Lake, we've done some stream bank restoration at Fuller's and East Cobb. We did the storm sewer replacement at Fair Oaks, and again, the Big Shanty sanitary system repair. We have put signs out at multiple parks. We're continuing with that project. We're adding several as we go. We'll probably do five to seven parks at a time because it does take a little while to get those done, but we're doing that. And we're also installing facility logos inside of our facilities, trying to get our sign package to be used in multiple parks because we still have certain parks that just don't have our sort of signs in them, and it's hard to tell which ones are Cobb County parks and which ones aren't. We replaced the cart paths, part of the cart paths at Cobblestone, and we've renovated the restrooms at Shaw Park. So, those are the completed projects. And our upcoming projects, you can see, these are ones that we've sort of started, but we've not gotten too far. They'll possibly be in the design phase, or we've at least passed them on to our SPOLOST management team and told them to start the process. So, there's multiple projects there, and it's, again, it's just a matter of we put them in on a schedule and try to do what we can. We're also trying to do economies of scale. If certain parks are needing certain of the same things, we try to add them all together so we can save some money. So, those are a lot of the projects that will be upcoming, probably within the next six to 12 to 18 months that will be started and/or completed, but we just don't have that completely done yet. That is all for my presentation. Do I have any questions?
Got a lot of work going on, but it's good to see all the improvements.
Yeah, again, it would be nice, you know, we're still trying to finish up, as I said, 2011 and 2016, and we're really trying to focus on that a little bit to sort of stay a little bit ahead, but there's certain things that we're fighting. But if we can get at least down to a manageable amount, that's a big thing. And then same thing with 2022, we don't want to get too far behind in that, so we're trying to do them all at the same time.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation. I don't know if Commissioners have any comments or questions? Thank you, Michael.
Thank you.
He did a good job.
It was very thorough. Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners and County Manager, Kimberly Limley, ITS. So, for, we're going to start with 2016 SPOLOST. We had three areas where we were approved by the voters. Data Center, Business Technology Transformation, and Building Security Emergency Life Safety upgrades. So, a total of about 44.8 million dollars across the three areas. The first thing I'm going to talk about is our data center build and technology modernization. Here's just a few pictures of our new data center. This is just some, I know this is exciting technology, right? But this is our new enclosure. If any of you had seen the previous data center, you would probably appreciate this more, but our design was done by Crofton Associates, and our technology services were done in partnership with Presidio. And here's our network operation, our new network operations center. This is where our operators that are staff 24/7, they monitor the network and the servers. They also take all the after-hours help desk calls that come in. This is our new printing center. Previously, in our, in our old data center, we had the printing area within the same area as all of our servers, which is definitely not good to have that toner flying through the air, getting through the technology equipment. So, we were able to separate that out, where we do some of our in-house printing for the different departments. And then a couple of other projects that we've done with this particular funding, we installed a new guest wireless circuit. We purchased some additional Windows and SQL Server licenses that we needed for the new hardware, an HR Financial Systems upgrade, UPS for the data center and for our disaster recovery site, and installation of a 4-gig internet circuit. In progress, we have just a little bit under a million left. We're still working on our disaster recovery site, and then also working on the final preparations for our redundant internet circuit. So, from the Business Technology Transformation projects, I'm just going to highlight a few things. This is, of course, not all of them, but some of the things that we, we had some pictures for. So, Sprout Social Implementation, this was something that we did in partnership with Communications. This is a social media management tool that our Communications Department and some of the other departments use this tool. And you can schedule posts and monitor the sentiment of what we're seeing on social media. Of course, Salesforce 3-1-1 CRM implementation. We are continually making enhancements, although we're saying this is completed, it's really not. We're continually making enhancements to the system. We've, since we went live initially with, in partnership with Communications, we have also added on our Economic Development Group. We're working on implementing for the Tax Commissioner, and we're also working on our implementation with our, with all of you and your assistants to be able to manage the constituent communication a little bit better. Marketing Cloud is another application that we implemented for Communications. So, this is the software that manages like the newsletters that go out on a regular basis, on a weekly basis for all of you, for just the generic Cobb County newsletter to the public. And then we also implemented a drone detection system in partnership with Public Safety. This was one of our GIS projects. We are continually adding to this, but again, all the SPOLOST funds have been spent, so we support it with our GIS fund at this point. Emergency Location Markers, this is another big one that you've heard of over the years, where this is in partnership with Parks and Public Safety and GIS, where it allows for you, for a citizen to be able to read the number off the sign, and then our Public Safety officials can respond quicker to them. Again, this is not something that we are continuing to fund through SPOLOST. We are now funding it through our GIS program. And Parks has also funded some replacement funds as well. Esri Endors, this is a project that is, we're doing in partnership with Property Management, and we're putting in all the building floor plans. We are in year three of the project, and recently you just approved extending the project to the end of 2025 so we can finish getting all of the floor plans into the system. And then this will actually work together in conjunction with another project that was completed in our Business Technology Transformation, which is City Works. This, these screenshots here are from our City Works Asset Management System and Work Order Management System. This is something Property Management just went live on, I believe, last year, and we will have all the floor plans and assets within the system to be able to build the facility capital management plan. It'll be a part of that process. And then another project in progress that we hope to go live on later in the summer is our Web Portal Phase Two. So, it's a revamp of our CobbCounty.org website, and I won't read all these other projects that are completed. You can read through those when you have a second. And then our Building Security Emergency Life Safety upgrades, this is all the access control and video surveillance that we have installed throughout the county. Although not all of the cameras and card readers are installed via SPOLOST funding, just so you have a big picture of what we have installed, we have over 900 card readers now throughout all the different county facilities and over 3,000 cameras. We still need more cameras, so I'm going to put a plug in for that, but we've been very successful in getting these implemented in a lot of our facilities with the SPOLOST funding. So, it's something that's been needed for a very long time. And then just a couple of other projects from the building security. We had some things done in our data center, built around security. And then, of course, the security electronic system for the Sheriff's Office. We're in the middle of that project, working with our, with HOK, which is the Construction Management Company, and then CML, who is helping with the design. Okay. And then 2022 SPOLOST, we've had, we have a little over 36 million approved throughout four different projects. In progress right now, we have our improvements to judicial technology. So, we have our Collaborate Case Management System that we're working on implementing for the Family Justice Center. And then completed, we have new Court Docket System boards over in five courts and two prosecution offices. A distributed antenna system, which is like a, basically a repeater for the judicial complex for the radio system, so they have coverage throughout the, sorry, throughout the entire building. A new, or we installed the court recording software for juvenile court, Nemo Q cueing system for probate court licenses and estates, and implemented our electronic warrant system for the Georgia probation management in our judges. And then for our technology infrastructure upgrades, we have numerous projects on our list in the contract negotiation phase or contract review phase. And completed of that bucket of money, we replaced over 1,000 wireless access points throughout the county. And then for Digital Government Smart Community, we have three project, major projects in progress, and you notice my little cloud graphic there. Everything's going to the cloud. So, we have our Enterprise Assessment and Tax Software Migration. We hope to go live with that later this summer. Our Sella, which is the community development software, SaaS migration to the cloud, that was previously approved earlier this year, and then our Cronos and Telestaff migration to the cloud. And the one completed project out of that is our e-procurement system that we worked in partnership with Procurement Services on. Okay. Any questions?
No, again. No, again, thank you for a robust presentation. Commissioners, do you have any comments or questions?
Okay. All right. I'm going to turn it over to Drew. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. I will do my best to match the speed, accuracy, and completeness of the previous presentations. 2011 SPOLOST, 99% complete, just a little bit remaining in three projects, two of which are the transit centers. Most of the funding associated with those two transit centers are grant funding. And then the, the only project that is in construction that, that will need to be complete before we can close out the transportation portion of the 2011 SPOLOST is Lower Roswell Road. Most of the activity right now is related to utility, relocations, and some construction on the west side of the, the project limits. And that is anticipated to be complete by the end of next year. Moving to the 2016, 95%, six projects in pre-construction and nine projects in construction. A lot of what ends up holding up SPOLOST programs or takes a long time in terms of the delivery of programs are, are projects that have complicating factors to them, whether they're federally funded or have other entities involved. Projects like Dallas Highway at Morris Hill has state funding in it. Old 41 Highway Roundabouts has some, some pretty intensive environmental and coordination with the National Park System. And, and so the, these types of projects end up taking a little bit longer. To highlight a couple of the projects, though, within the construction phase, again, nine in construction, two of which are partnership projects with neighboring municipalities of Smyrna and Paulding County. This first one to highlight that has just completed construction, I want to give credit to the county attorney's office because they have as much credit in being as far along as this one as, as anyone within D O T. This one, the, the original contractor ended up defaulting on the, on the contract and we had to, to call in bonds. And it was a very, very complex process. Ended up having to get, you see, great Midwest insurance company, that's not a typical contractor. And so it took a lot of work to get to this point, but very proud of the progress that project is substantially complete and, and very excited about having, having that one done. And in particular, for the residents that live there that dealt with that construction for, for a very long time. Silver Comet Trail Connector actually solved this one this morning. A lot of great progress here. This will connect the path trail work that, that is on the old rail bed that extends the Silver Comet Trail to the east and brings that from Plant Atkinson on Atlanta Road down to the Chattahoochee River to connect into the trail system within the city of Atlanta. Ultimately, once Atlanta completes a few of their trail segments, this will connect the belt line to the Silver Comet. Very, very excited about this project. Also is done in partnership with an internal project for some bridge rehabilitation within the, the project limits. Some of the, the project pictures here show that, that great progress. South Barrett Reliever, another great partnership project, this time with the Town Center CID. And we, we did have some utility and some design and shop drawing approval delays on that one, but some of the pictures that you see here, the first one on the left is from Home Depot, is just there to the left of the picture. This is looking at that, that new bridge over 75. Costco is off to the right. The picture on the right is from that Costco side of 75, looking back over that, that same bridge. So you see, most of the, the bridge work has been complete. We're currently working on sidewalk along Roberts Court, grading around the Costco area, and then finalizing that, that roundabout that you see on the, the left picture there. Another project highlight, Burnt Hickory at Stout Parkway, Brownsville Extension. This one was done in partnership with Paulding County, so Erica is still helping out Cobb County even across the county border. And that, that project is substantially complete and, and glad to have that one done. Moving to the 2022 SPOLOST, the, we're about half complete as we look at the, the total project completions. There is a, a large number of funds that are remaining, but to lean into what Bill talked about earlier, the remaining is not necessarily available. That, that 156 million is earmarked for specific projects, and we'll talk about some of those as we go. Projects in pre-construction, this is a pretty extensive list. There are 64 projects that you're looking at here. 10 of those are drainage, six of those are resurfacing that have very minimal design but are going through a pre-construction, a minimal pre-construction phase to identify the exact treatment and, and rehabilitation needed for those. But some of the larger projects, the intersection improvements, the bridge replacements obviously do have a little bit more involved when it comes to the design effort. First one to highlight in pre-construction is Due West at Antioch Road. This is a safety and operational improvement that takes a, a side street stop and converts it into a roundabout. There are some pretty heavy utility relocations on the bottom left quadrant of that intersection, but we anticipate construction to, to let in fall of, of this year with the, the work really beginning in earnest at the beginning of next year. This next project is done in partnership with congressionally directed spending requests that was approved. It is being done because of the timelines associated with those earmarked funds from Congress, is done as a design build, where there is a more minimal level of design that is completed. And then it is bid, the contractor comes and finalizes that, that design. This intersection experiences pretty significant delays during the peak hours, and it will expand the, particularly the westbound approach to include two through lanes. Right now, the inside through lane drops into that left turn lane, creating a weave and, and crash issue as well as a congestion issue with that one. The, the design build, the, the final portion of that procurement will take place in, in spring of next year. Fewer projects in construction than pre-construction, there are 34 projects on this particular list, four of which are bridges, five are drainage projects, and nine are resurfacing projects in some stage of completion. The first one to highlight on the construction side, this one just started with a notice to proceed earlier this month, but another one, this is right next to Alatuna Creek Park. This is Old Stylesborough Road at County Line Road, another safety and operational improvement to install a roundabout at that intersection. Similarly, at South Gordon and Pisco Road, this is a, another single lane roundabout that will enhance both the safety and operations of that intersection. The construction on this one was just awarded and is scheduled to begin next month, about a 15-month duration on that project. Within the drainage component, we've got a couple of the components that we'll highlight here. 107 projects have been completed here. These are, are smaller scale, you have 50,000 to 200, $300,000 projects, but they do take a significant amount of effort when they, when they come up. And these are not really optional projects. They are sinkholes and the road is potentially compromised, and, and so we move very quickly to get these done. I will note that 75% of the funding has been expended within about half of the, the program timeline. So, so an area of emphasis and, and challenge as we see drainage infrastructure failing more and more often. And then the sidewalk component status, you'll, you'll note here, the remaining funds are pretty significant, but again, remaining not available. These are all earmarked to specific projects. We're, we're in a heavy design phase right now. Those projects will begin to move towards construction, as is noted in that chart to the left, or to the right, showing that in 25, 26, and 27, the significant expenditures and completion of, of sidewalk that is expected. Related to resurfacing, I've got a couple of slides on resurfacing. The, the budget, current budget for resurfacing is 216 million. That is, the vast majority of that is SPOLOST. There is some L-Meg, local maintenance improvement grant funding that does come into this, this program fund. We, we hit that, that program, that, that component very heavy in 22 and 23, anticipating costs to go up. And the, the annual contract amounts in 24 and 25 have been less than that initial that we saw in 22 and 23. And as we look at strategy, traditionally, resurfacing has just been wait till it needs to be resurfaced and then resurfaced it. And, and just this constant cycle of waiting until it gets to the point where it's in poor condition and then rehabilitating it completely. To talk about the condition of the roads, this next chart shows that about half of our roads, 51% or 45%, depending on if we look at local roads in the blue, or thoroughfares in the orange, are in need of resurfacing. And the, the ideal distribution of this chart would be 25 in each of those categories with perfectly new asphalt all the way to the right, and that 90 to 100 score of the conditional index going to the 70 to 89 and so on and so forth. And so as, as we've looked at this, the, the, the construction team has done a phenomenal job of looking at different treatments and alternatives in order to rehabilitate roads. You'll note, and, and of course, the board approved the crack seal contracts that we've begun to do. Water is the enemy of infrastructure, whether it's a road or a roof. And so we've done a lot more of that, of tracing those cracks with a bituminous filler that, that seals it up and creates that water, stops that water intrusion. And what they've shown here and, and looked through are a couple of other methods, a double micro and a cape seal, which I've learned a lot about, that creates an additional wear surface that is much less of a cost. If we look at the, the cost for those two compared to a full resurfacing, it is a good bit less. So this is something that we'll be meeting with you about in terms of identifying some specific roads and future contracts, if the board is willing to look at a program where those roads that are in the 90 to 100, we obviously leave those alone, those have just been resurfaced. And then in the kind of okay condition, they're not quite bad enough to need to be resurfaced, but, but they're not brand new, looking at things like the crack seal, the double micro, and the cape seal in order to extend the life of payment and to be very judicious with the funding that we have. Except more, more information on that to follow, but just wanted to provide some of this information that was hot off the press to, to me, to let you know that in this component, that is the largest component in all of SPOLOST, we continue to look at ways to extend the life of asphalt that is so foundational for all of our services, for all of the, the traveling public.
Question regarding resurfacing. Are you using both SPOLOST and L-Meg for resurfacing?
That's correct. So annually, for each of our, our contracts, we, we locally fund all of our local roads. Those are mostly subdivision neighborhood type roads. And then the thoroughfare contract is, is where we incorporate. Right now, we're anywhere from six to eight million dollars a year from the state, and so we appropriate that, that local maintenance revenue into that thoroughfare contract. And that contract might, and, and we're required to match that by 30%. So we match that using SPOLOST. But typically, we overmatch that. So it might be a $20 million contract, six of which, or seven, six and a half coming from state maintenance grants.
Okay. And if I'm clear, we took money out of resurfacing to put, to drainage.
We did.
And so there's a gap now with our resurfacing dollars.
That's correct.
Okay.
That's right.
All right.
And then the final component to highlight, Bill talked about this earlier, the, the department has a great history of leveraging SPOLOST funds to bring in additional grant revenue. This is just the fed-state grant component. There's additional grants that come into some of the other components. So the, the $74 million in 2016 leveraged an additional 146 million in grant revenue. The, so far, the 28 million in the 2022 SPOLOST has leveraged 95 million. For you see there, a total between the two programs of 241 million dollars of grant revenue. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you for yet another robust presentation. Commissioners, do you have any questions for Drew? Thank you for that update.
Thank you.
Chairwoman, Commissioners, that concludes our presentation. I know that was a lot of information, but again, staff is available for any questions that you have.
Yeah, thank you. You know, one thing we didn't talk about is just the increasing cost of materials and labor and now the way that the markets are and with tariffs. I'm curious to know what anticipated impact or real impact we're already experiencing from that.
Yeah, we, we can work on putting something together for you on that. That is something that we are monitoring, especially with some existing projects that we know we already have some budget struggles with in 2022. Just continuing to get those updates. But as we can finalize contracts, get those in place, the sooner the better, obviously, as prices are escalating, but that's kind of been the case since inflation began. So we've kind of been fighting that since we really started the 2022 SPOLOST, which is one of the challenges that you've seen when we've discussed some of the projects that are being held back as we look for funding solutions and how to address those in the upcoming, upcoming months. But we can, we can try to put a little bit more detailed analysis together for you.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Any other questions from the Commissioners? Good.
Thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
We'll now go on to our second presentation, which is to receive the results of our brand equity survey, and that will be brought by our communications director, Ross Cabbott.
Good afternoon, Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager. They had 70 slides in theirs. We have about seven on ours, give or take a few, so hopefully we can get you in and out of here. In recent years, we've been engaging more with government, government communicators through organizations like NACO, ACCG, 3CMA, and others. Like us, they're navigating the challenge of connecting with residents in an increasingly fractured media environment. Traditional media usage has dropped dramatically. Social media has become, just to be nice, a confusing and chaotic space, and the way people consume information has varied widely among different demographic groups. So we're constantly exchanging ideas and information and success stories as we look for better ways to make a connection. One thing that's become glaringly clear through these conversations is that Cobb County significantly lags behind other local governments in building a cohesive brand. Branding, we're told, has become one of the most important tools local governments use to connect meaningfully with their communities. At conventions, seminars, and virtual meetings, we've heard other communicators talk about how their brands support economic development and tourism, foster a sense of community pride, and, and thankful that they're in the community, and help inform residents about the services governments provide them. In a recent NACO forum, Hillsborough County, Florida, shared how over a period of years, they've placed their brand on street signs, vehicles, and public buildings, making it clear, this is how your county works. It's a simple but powerful message. We provide this, this is a service for you. Here in Cobb, we've seen somewhat of a disconnect, we sensed, between some of our residents and the services the county provides, so we wanted to take some sort of action to figure out exactly what that looks like. We allocated a portion of this year's marketing budget, went through the procurement process, and are fortunate to be able to work with Cobb County-based ID-8 to take the first step in any branding effort, reaching out to the community, getting their temperature, gauging how they feel about Cobb County government. So now to share some of the, at least the high-level results of that survey, we are fortunate to have some of the ID-8 folks with us. I'll invite Kristin Sellier up here to kind of go through some of the results of the survey that took place roughly over the last three or four months. Kristin?
Thank you, Ross, and thank you to the Cobb County team for engaging us to do this meaningful research. And it's an honor to be with the board and the Board of Commissioners today to share the brand equity search findings and results. So why we're here and what we've uncovered. The presentation has been segmented into four parts. The first part is really why we're here today and summarizing the research project. The second part is explaining the meaningful research data and distilling the data into valuable findings. The third part will be data-driven recommendations to improve and unify Cobb County government. And the fourth are case studies that reflect the results of other organizations seeking meaningful progress. Over the last four months, we worked together to conduct extensive research into how relevant and valuable government services are to the Cobb County community. What we wanted to uncover were these questions. Number one, what's the overall reputation of Cobb County among residents and stakeholders? Number two, are residents aware of all the service offerings provided? I mean, I just sat through that SPOLOST meeting and Cobb County is amazing. We are doing a lot here. So do people know that? Three, what improvements can we make to create a more unified community? The brand equity survey launched in January of 2025. We surveyed businesses, residents, and stakeholders in the Cobb County community. We received 635 unique responses from a wide range of people, age, demographics, residents, visitors, and a variety of age and ethnicity. Once receiving the data, we conducted seven interviews with key stakeholders, further researching the results of the survey. And then fourth, our researcher analyzed and synthesized the meaningful data to report valuable evidence-based insights and opportunities for Cobb County. That evidence-based is a really important piece for us. That's what we focus all of our work on is facts driving action. So top of the house survey results, great news, 61% of the community members So top of the house survey results, great news, 61% of the community members have a generally positive perception of Cobb County government services. Top of the house findings around improvements. Number one, the community is unaware of many valuable services, and thus, we need to elevate the awareness of Cobb County's unique service and offerings. Number two, top of the house findings, the research revealed that the Cobb County Board, the Cobb County brand is outdated and irrelevant, and to create a more relevant and consistent brand. And a few of the charts are shown up in the corner. There'll be an addendum with the presentation that goes into greater detail on all the research findings. A deeper look at some of the results, and I'll pull out a few, few things to dive deep into. The community is least familiar with economic development, community development, and senior services. Where is the community getting their information from? Like Ross mentioned, 88% are getting information from the Cobb County website, 45% on social media, which is growing significantly, and 34% from local news sources. It's no longer the newspaper. People are looking everywhere and getting information from a variety of places. And third, one of the pieces here to bring out is the community believes that these programs, and this is the definition of them, they define them as poor or fair, and these are perceptions, not what it actually is, but perception the community has. So the community said 44% thought the transportation, transit, traffic, and maintenance were in that for, or poor or fair category. 37% agreed the same sentiment with economic development, and 37% about the community development. And we all know that we're doing a great job, but the community doesn't see it. Diving into these key findings, so these are the top four areas that, as the researcher went through this additional information, that we felt could help inform the recommendations. So 50% of the respondents are unfamiliar with economic development and senior services, really important in this Cobb County community. Number two, libraries, public safety, and parks and recreation are highly regarded. I just heard a great presentation about all the amazing things that are happening. Number three, political rhetoric has diluted the brand reputation and overall value of Cobb County government services. And a number four, Cobb County needs a refreshed, consistent brand that highlights its unique offerings while showcasing a broad appeal. And with that, the driven, the data-driven recommendations. So needed improvements include creating a more relevant and consistent look and feel, and elevating the awareness of all of Cobb County's unique services and offerings. By making these improvements, Cobb County government services can enhance public perception of their services, increase engagement and participation in government programs, attract and retain talented employees, and number four, boost the overall reputation and effectiveness of the county. So our researcher went into these data-driven recommendations, and is, this slide, I think, is very meaningful. By doing these things, it will result in, in this. So number one, updating the logo and tagline, so modernizing the county's logo with a look and feel that reflects its people and culture, innovation, and unique offerings. What is that going to do for the county? It will enhance trust and engagement, and will increase revenue and efficiency. Number two, doing this, consistent brand guidelines, injecting modern colors, fonts, and tone across all platforms, websites, signage, social media, and printed materials. It will result in economic development and business attraction. And number three, doing this, branded community materials, creating templates, flyers, presentations, digital content, to maintain a cohesive look. Consider campaigns to promote the new brand assets across the country, across the county. That will result in talent attraction and retention. And the fourth item, strategic storytelling. Develop engaging written, digital content such as resident-centric stories, employee spotlights, project success stories, and community development updates in the form of before and after visuals. And then that will result in cost save, cost savings from a stronger community relations. So progress takes intention, focus, time, and resources. Cobb County is like a lot of other organizations, needing to progress. To better understand how a few other organizations address this, I have two stories to share with the board today. So the first is a Visit Marietta case study. We worked with Visit Marietta to help drive traffic to Marietta to visit, and we did that work only after we performed research. And the research told us that Marietta is like a hub and spoke. People come to Marietta for a variety of reasons, and on part of their journey, they always end in Marietta Square, either for a meal or a meetup, but it's a hub and spoke, Marietta Square at the center, and all these other wonderful assets around it. We built a campaign based on that idea and redesigned the brand, and we've had tremendous engagement, launching in the fall of 2024, and it's progressing through now with a lot of excitement for Visit Marietta and for the community at large. The next slide shows a few examples of the visual that's coming out of it, and the, one of the signature events is just around the corner, Taste of Marietta. So you can see the brand, the prior brand, the current brand, billboards, paid media, how the brand is working, living, breathing, and all of these other, and all of these different mediums. And you may have seen some of these. Have any of you seen any of this Visit Marietta around? Yes, it's great. It's building, it's building reputation. Georgia Department of Labor, so we worked with the Georgia Department of Labor when Bruce Thompson was the commissioner, and if you know Bruce Thompson, he has since passed away, and it was an honor to get to work with him and that organization. Georgia Department of Labor experienced some really hard times during the pandemic with a lot of people claiming unemployment and a flood of unemployment requests with minimal amount of people to respond, thus creating almost a customer service nightmare and a reputation to change. So we helped the Georgia Department of Labor look at that in a different, look at that differently, of how they're going to move forward, and we focused all of the work on where the brand was going, how they were changing customer service, how they were changing the experience of the Georgia Department of Labor. We helped reimagine the brand in a new way and a vibrant way that reflected how they were delivering their, on their mission, to be responsive, to adapt, to change, be consistent, empathetic, and effective. And we helped them build this brand, and it is currently alive and breathing and well, and as the Georgia, the Georgia Department of Labor has also changed. Great, two great success stories. Thank you so much, and I'm going to pass it over to Ross.
Thanks. It was great working with them, and one of the lessons that we learned from the results we got from them is that if we have a chance to go through this and work through a branding process with Cobb County, we want to bring the community with us. They were really engaged in the surveys, and if we move to a branding, we want to continue that engagement with residents and keep them part of the process as we go on. Like most things we do in the county and elsewhere, the longer we wait, obviously, the more expensive and difficult it will be to go through this process. A county of our size, talking with some of our contemporaries across the country, this is something that will take a better part of a decade to eventually implement. It's nothing that will happen overnight. It will take a long period to do it, and the quicker we get going, obviously, the better. Before I came here, I spent three decades in, in private employment where the brand was inherent in everything we did, and you can ask local companies like Home Depot, the Braves, and TKE how important their brand is to what they do and how they serve their customers, and, you know, sitting in my position, I don't think there's any reason why we shouldn't be able to leverage some of that into what we do in Cobb County. And I know we're in a biennial budget period here, so our next steps forward can be a discussion for another day, but I do want to leave you this afternoon with a quote from one of our partners in, in another state in the county about branding, says, "A brand does not make the county great. A brand shines a light on what makes the county great." And that's where I hope we will go. Appreciate your time, and we finish before 2:30.
Thank you. Ross, can you clarify what are our next steps now that we have this survey?
Well, this gives us a guideline, and actually, for me, most of the information they provided was more on the positive side than I expected, so it gives us a good baseline of, of where we will go next. A couple of years ago, Shelley and I sat through several presentations with a bunch of companies who do this across the country. We got a good idea about what it would take and how much it would be, but that's been several years ago. I think we would have to kind of re-fire up those talks and see what it would take as far as effort on our behalf, on theirs, the kind of engagement. We would have to have some, I'm sure, a lot of community engagement along the way, and the, the costs are probably a little bit more than they were three or four years ago. So we, we would like to eventually refire that up. We know we're, you know, we're not in a position today to, to talk to these folks, but we would like to maybe start that up in the next year or so.
Okay.
Chairwoman, what I would like to see happen is for Ross to sit down with you all individually, and maybe go a little bit deeper and ask you some of the questions that you all have in mind in terms of what you would like to see, if anything, new or different in the brand. And so if you all are amenable to that, I would ask Ross to schedule a time to sit with each of you and just talk a little bit more in detail about your thoughts about it, and then we can come back to you with what we think might be a feasible strategy to move forward. But without, without feedback from the board, or direction from the board, I don't know that we need to spend a whole lot of effort and time, you know, moving forward on, on a lot of this if we are heading in the wrong direction with what you've seen today.
Okay.
Hey, we can make some podcasts out of it.
So you're planting a seed for consideration for a brand update for the county?
Yep.
For today's presentation, okay. Yes, Commissioner Burrow.
You said that there were 636 responses. Did, besides the county website or subscribers, did it go all the newsletters, county, social media? Who, who did this go out to?
Yeah, we initially...
Eight hundred thousand constituents.
Right. We initially started through, through our newsletters and on social media. We got a, we got more responses than we initially thought we would, but they were tend, tending to be older in a demographic. We went out with a second wave to some other social media sites like Instagram and other places where we could kind of balance things out a little bit. We were pretty successful in doing that as well, so we had it out for a period of...
I mean, it was just a volunteer thing to send it back in to respond?
Yeah, yes.
So we don't know how many it reached as far as in Cobb, throughout Cobb?
No, I mean, there's more in the addendum that I sent out to y'all yesterday. There is a lot of data in there. Some of that may be included, so.
Okay.
But yeah, we, we were very happy. It's very hard from our, you know, history of getting people to sit down and complete a survey, and we were extremely happy with the number of people who were willing to do that.
Right. And I think it shows that you had a big response from seniors, 65 and older. It seemed like they were the most responsive, but yet, senior centers were the least popular or that they were aware of. And I, I have one senior center in my district, and it is always busy. It's the busiest one, Mountain View. But, I mean, the Tim Lee Senior Center, the Mountain View Complex, but I've never been in a senior center, the Powder Springs Station, or anywhere that it wasn't just full. So I, if it's, if they're not aware of it and it's that full now, we'll be overflowing and busting at the seams when people do find out.
I was over at one of them earlier today, and I was thinking to myself, you know, that may not be such a bad thing, because I don't know if they could take, I don't know if they have the room to take many more people in here.
And then, well, we can discuss it further when we do the one-on-ones, but I know this was part of your budget, but do we have any estimate of what it, what it costs to do the survey with the company? And to change our, it's going to be expensive to change our logo and our stationery and all of our materials that go out if we do come up with a new brand.
Yeah, and I, I think I would follow the lead of other counties where they do this over a period of time where things, as they come out of service, or you need to get new business cards or stationery, or need to put up new traffic signs, that's when the changes are made. You know, I talked to a couple of counties who, when they put new buildings up, the new logo went on there, but they didn't run out and, and change if it's too, too expensive, too, takes too much time and effort to, to do that at one time. So like I said, this would be a process that would probably, for us in Cobb County with a population of nearly 800,000, it would take more, much of a decade to get this process done.
Yeah, and I know Michael did that with parks, changing the signs and logo. At all the parks, we did it as they came along.
He's volunteered to pay for any change, though, at his facility, so.
We're good there.
No, he's not going to. So what about the other departments that have their own communications person? Do y'all communicate? Do they go through you, or do they communicate with you?
Yeah, we, we've discussed this, we have a Cobb Communicators Meeting once a month. We meet in person once a quarter. Branding's been discussed at many of those meetings. I gave a presentation to y'all a year or two ago where I talked about how we were branding in silos in Cobb County and how that hurts the effort, and we've discussed it, they're aware of it. We've had a lot of them, with the help of the county manager, kind of pull back on some of their initiatives to continue branding their independent departments while we try to figure out a way to do this in a more cohesive manner. You know, my, my concern has always been that I just think that there's a lot of things that we do that people aren't aware that we do them. The libraries has a great reputation and a good brand, but I wonder if you do a survey from people coming out of libraries, if you, who runs the libraries? Where does the funding come from? Who, who makes the call on their funding? I'm not so sure we'd get a lot of respondents saying the Cobb County Board of Commissioners is responsible for that, and so that's one of the things we want to kind of rein in with this effort. Have a speak as one voice with one look, so everybody knows the services, the taxes they pay, what do they pay for?
Okay. Thank you, Ross.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions, Commissioners? All right, thank you for your presentation, and thank you for your work in helping us update how we present ourselves in the community. With that, I believe our meeting is adjourned. We will be back here tonight for our regular Board of Commissioners meeting at 7:00 PM. Please feel free to join us. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.